Meeting of the Westboro Planning Board. I will read the agenda. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. We have a release of, I'm sorry, we have Silver Hollow Estates Extension of Covenant and possible lot releases. We have a continuation of the public hearing on Six Bellows Road. Continuation of the public hearing for 25 Gleason. That will be continued to next meeting. The public hearings for 19212 Oak Street and 1 Gleason Street will also be continued to the next meeting. So we will start with the Silver Hollow Estates Extension of Subdivision Covenant. Jim, I'm going to turn to you for a brief explanation.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, the residential subdivision on Mount Pleasant Street, known as Silver Hollow Estates, has most of their lots, 20 of 26, have been released from covenant. Their current covenant is expiring and they need to modify and extend that covenant. And once that is done, they will come back to the planning board to ask for a release of additional lots. However, they're not going to reduce their security bond. The price for materials for construction, as you know, have increased dramatically in the last couple of years. And their security value, though it more than covers the amount of outstanding work, it's not significant enough for them to reduce the bond at this time. So they will be back in for requests for bond, lot releases, without reducing their security. However, in the interim, you do need to extend the date for them to complete the road. And it's February 16th, I believe, February 17th of '26. You have in front of you a modified covenant, which was written by our town council after reviewing the proposed covenant by the applicant, Silver Hollow Estates LLC. Excuse me. This version is much simpler than that which was proposed by the applicant, but you will notice on the third page, I think it's the third page, the applicant has already signed this draft that was proposed by the town. So the applicant has already approved the covenant. The planning board must now approve the covenant.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I have no questions.
No.
We want to make, anyone want to motion this?
I move the planning board approve a modification of subdivision covenant for Silver Hollow Estates LLC as written in the document titled Town of Westboro Planning Board Subdivision Covenant Modification dated May 2, 2023. Said modification having been previously approved by Silver Hollow Estates LLC, the Coventor.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? That's three to zero in favor.
I do need to have you sign that now because Kristin needs to notarize your signatures.
Do you need my license, Kristin, or do you know me?
No.
I'm just typical. Do we want to go to Six Bellows, or do we want to wait for Hazel for that?
I think Hazel wanted to have you continue the other public hearings, just in the interest of time, because she wanted to be here for some of the discussion.
Gentlemen, we're just waiting for one, Hazel had warned us that she's going to be about 20 minutes late, so as soon as she gets here, we'll move to Six Bellows, but we're just going to take care of some administrative stuff.
Do you want me to assign Blue?
Yeah. Yeah, oh, sorry, here.
Blue, thank you.
All right. So we will move on to the continuation of the public hearing for the earth-moving permit at 25 Gleason. I don't know if I have, I don't have it in my Dropbox.
You looking for the motion?
No, the letter I've got to read.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. I have a letter from Land Design Collaborative addressed to Jim, to the Westboro Planning Board dated May 1 regarding special permit earth-moving ward property Gleason Street, Westboro, Mass. Dear Mr. Robbins, on behalf of Walter Ward, the landowner, and Milford Stone, the operator, collectively the applicants, we request a continuance of the public hearing scheduled for May 2, 2023 until the planning board's meeting of May 16, 2023. We appreciate your time last week and are reviewing the updated draft conditions for the permit. We look forward to seeing the planning board on the 16th. And that's signed, Michael Scott, for Land Design Collaborative, who is the representative of the owner. Any questions on that? Any comments, Jim?
No. As you know, we had a work session on that project last week. I took Lisa's comments, Conservation Commission and myself, and put together a list of comments, sent them to Mike Scott, and he distributed to his applicant, but we're waiting for their comments.
Can I ask Lisa a question on this, or is that appropriate? I know in the work session, we had asked Mike, and you were going to take a look uphill on the neighboring property. Do you know if that's in, scheduled at all, or you're, yeah, okay. All right. Just would like to follow up on that with him. I don't know if it was you or Jen Miller. It was Jen Miller. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to put, yeah. Okay. So maybe they have done that, and we're just not aware of it. I was just concerned about runoff off the hill from the neighbor's property that was also, not, the what, there's.
Daddy's land?
Uh, yeah. We're just, so we, we'd asked Mike Scott to contact the owner and see if he and Jen Miller could take a walk up there to make sure that slope is stable and we're not going to have runoff from uphill. So that was probably one of the only new things that came out of that. Everything else was stuff we've discussed or in Lisa's comments. All right. So we have the continuation of the public hearings for 19212 Oak Street, as well as for 1 Gleason Street.
Did you vote to continue the hearing?
No.
I'm sorry. Do we have a motion on 25 Gleason?
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the earth-moving special permit application at 25 Gleason Street due Tuesday, May 16, 2023, at 6:30 p.m., as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's three to zero. Great. Next two items are the Oak Street continuation and the 1 Gleason Street continuation. We did have a work session today on this. Essentially, the applicant and his Waterman Design, who's his engineer, are going to attempt to maximize the green space on that and at least duplicate the amount of green space that they, that would have been there under the commercial, so that if the commercial building, buildings, there were technically possibility of two buildings, if those aren't built in favor of residential buildings, that the amount of green space remains at or above what the occupants expected. So I think that's where we should, I don't know if we'll have a proposal or revision by the 16th. I know, I'd like to move it as fast as we can, but it may be the first meeting in June. All right. So Jim, any comments? Anything I forgot on that?
No, I think you did a good, oops, sorry, excuse me. I think you did a good job of summarizing where the project is at. I have asked Waterman Design for concepts of different options. Mark mentioned that. I asked for their sketches so that when they come back with a recommend, with a recommended option, we can see where they came from. So they're going to look at several placements of the new buildings on the site and explain to us the advantages or disadvantages of those placements.
Yeah. I mean, at some point, we have to decide whether to provide a density bonus in favor of that other parcel. But I think it would be best if we knew exactly what he was planning to build there before we make that decision.
Right. Because if, for example, the number is 18, which is what he's requesting, then you're going to need to give him a density bonus of six. If he, if you decide that the site should have a different number of units, then that will change your density bonus.
I don't know if it would be six, though.
He has 12 right now, right? At 12 at Oak Street.
Yeah. Right. But it's a, he's looking for 18 units over four acres, so the bonus would be.
Well, is it four acres? I think it's like 2.8.
Is it? I thought it was four.
Yeah, so we'll work, we'll work out the math.
Okay, well, that, yeah.
The bonus is six units. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if it's 18 units over three acres, then yes, it's, the density bonus is six. But I think it's four acres, so.
Okay, we'll take a look.
That would actually be a lower bonus, so, which is a good thing, I think. All right. We have a, I have to read his letter, sorry. Trying to move this along, guys, sorry. May 2, we got a letter from Ansari Builders, addressed to Jim Robbins. Jim, we hereby request a continuance of the following two public hearings scheduled for May 2 to a meeting scheduled on May 16. One is Hana Place and two is 1 Gleason Street Village Commons. And that's signed for Ruk Ansari, who is the owner. Any questions?
No questions.
We want to make a motion?
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the site plan review application for 19212 Oak Street and the public hearing to modify special permit TOV number 2014-1 for Village Commons at 1 Gleason Street to Tuesday, May 16, 2023, at 6:30 p.m., as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's three to zero of continuing. We have meeting minutes. No meeting minutes? It's just on here? Okay. Board members who attend other committee meetings. I don't think there's anything new since the last, our meeting last week, as well as the downtown plan and housing zoning by laws in the highway district. I don't think there's anything new to discuss on those, is there? All right. I think the only thing left, then, is the Bellows Road, so I think we should start on that and let's get through the first half, and then hopefully Hazel will be here for the conditions.
Yeah, she should be here in five minutes, so.
I'm catching up.
All right. So we have the continuation of the public hearing and the decision for the site plan review application at Six Bellows Road. Jim, I'm going to turn it to you. The applicant has had a chance to review this. I know there was one comment on the EV charging, yeah, please come up.
For the record, Manadin Sayad, President of Burroughs Islamic Society Board.
So typically, yeah, if you just want to state your name and.
Imad Zirri from the Burroughs Islamic Society.
Yavon Baik from Burroughs Islamic Society.
So typically, what we would do is have Jim take us through the decision step by step, and if there's something you disagree with, which I know you do on the EV charging requirement, you could bring that up either at the end or, you know, in process. You know, I'll make a point to stop there so we can have a discussion on that. But for now, was there anything else in the decision that concerned you?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay. So Jim, why don't you take us through that, and again, we'll just pause at that and have a discussion on that requirement.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see that you have a copy. I don't know if you do have a copy. You should go through it with me, just so that you know where I am.
Here, I have, I have mine on the computer if you want an extra copy here.
Still yours?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Don't get, don't get me wrong, I just, yeah, I think that's it.
You have another?
Thank you.
So since the electronic version was mailed out to the board and to the applicant, we made a couple typographical changes. One of the plans that, one of the drafts that circulated earlier said special permit. This is not a special permit. This is a site plan review application only. So any place in the original draft that said special permit has been changed to correctly reflect site plan review. So that being said, the draft that you have in front of you is to approve site plan review application number 2023-1 for Bellows Road. And the planning board on the first page states that will approve with conditions an application for that site plan at Six Bellows Road from the Burroughs Islamic Society, who is the applicant in this case. The property is in the Highway Business District, and it is identified on Ancestral's Map 28 as parcel 61. The requirements of Section 2300 zoning by law will be addressed in this decision. The next page, excuse me, is a simple description of the plan that was provided by the applicant. There's no new information there. The findings reflect what was discussed at the public hearing, the first portion of which is just a restatement of the materials that we received during the application and any letters that we received or were sent to the applicant. I'm down at the bottom of page three right now. It says during the public hearing process, there was concern for adequate parking on site during peak hours of worship and prayer time at the facility. Also, there was concern for existing traffic, I'm sorry, exiting traffic onto Bellows Road following completion of worship services. The applicant stated its willingness to provide additional parking if needed once the facility is occupied through an agreement with abutting properties. The applicant reached out to the U.S. Post Office in the orders at property at 112 Turnpike Road to inquire about the possibility of sharing parking for the Islamic Society at their adjacent properties. Also, the applicant has stated they will provide special duty police officer at the project exit drive to direct traffic leaving the site following conclusion of worship services on Friday afternoons. The applicant will also post no parking signage along both sides of Bellows Road and provide pavement markings stating do not block intersection at the intersection of Bellows Road and East Main Street. Pavement marking locations to be determined by the town engineer. Moving to page four.
By me, Jim, that still says special permit under that page.
I'm sorry?
That page still says a special permit, use is allowed by this special permit?
Yeah, this printout was before we found that error, so the, just wherever you see special permit, understand it'll be site plan.
Mark?
In.
Please, sir.
Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, if you want to further define it, give me the language you want, and I'll be happy to put that in.
Yeah. What page are you on with the special permit?
In the findings, I'm sure.
Page four? The use is allowed by this special permit?
I want to make sure they hear this. Lisa, can you come here for just for a second and use the mic? Thank you.
I just received this, so I haven't had a chance to look at it. So if the board is, wants to approve this, I'm not sure how you're going to go about this. But I would like to reserve the right to either comment and make additional comments to the, to this document, or if it needs to be approved tonight as is, just leave a line item saying, I will issue a letter and that these conditions are subject to whatever I have in my letter.
So do you understand that? We could, we could move this forward to a decision tonight, but it would be subject to you, you know, to the review by the town engineer, and you would have to understand that she would have some authority at that point that we could not intervene on.
I mean, we understand. As long as there's nothing, no item introduced that we haven't had the opportunity to discuss.
I don't think it would be a new item, but if we missed something in here that Lisa was expecting, then that would, that would be at her discretion at that point. Does that make sense?
Yes.
We could continue it to next meeting and give her a chance to review it, but I'd like to move this forward.
I think we'd like to, yes.
So.
My quick suggestion on this one is to, instead of Bellows Road and East Main, I think a better description would be Bellows Road and the on-ramp for Route 9 is where we want that sign. Or if you want to just change it to a location determined between, you know, per my department, you could do that as well.
I think under the conditions, it does say that.
Okay.
Yeah. When we get further down there, all of the signage and.
Okay.
Mark, pavement markings and everything is all at, to be determined, at locations to be determined by DPW.
Perfect.
I'll go through all the conditions so you can follow along, Lisa. Okay. Top of page four, use is allowed by this site plan review application. This site plan review approval conditions, the use of the property at Six Bellows Road for a place of assembly for religious purposes with parking as described in the project application and as provided in the Westboro zoning bylaws and site plan review regulations. This site plan review approval attaches to it the following conditions. Number one, and this is boilerplate, this is what the building commissioner requires prior to the final certificate of occupancy for the project and its structures. All plans approved by the planning board in this site plan review with comments from all departments shall be verified through as-built plans. Said plans shall include all required landscaping, utilities, lighting, plot plan, site improvements, and/or requirements as specified in this approved decision. Should be no S there. As-built plans shall be approved through the town engineering, building, and/or appropriate department to verify as-built prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. The building commissioner may withhold occupancy should any of these items be found deficient. That's the building commissioner's requirement. Number two, the applicant shall install landscaping materials and lighting as shown in the plans. Number three, to promote and protect public safety, the applicant shall fund a police detail at the site exit driveway, and I was requested to add the words onto Bellows Road. So at the site exit driveway, onto Bellows Road, to direct traffic at the site entrance exit during worship services. The duration of this police detail shall extend for four weeks from the date of occupancy and commencement of worship services at the property period. No parking signage shall be posted by the applicant along both sides of Bellows Road as determined by the Department of Public Works. Right turn only signage shall be posted at the exit driveway and directly opposite the driveway on Bellows Road. Page five. Do not block intersection signage and pavement markings shall be placed by the applicant as determined by the town engineer at the intersection of Bellows Road and East Main. And I can add, at the.
I think that description is fine. At the East Main Street ramp heading to Route 9 is.
You're fine with that? Okay, you're fine with that. Very good. All of the above requirements shall be completed by the applicant prior to certificate of occupancy issued by the town. Number four, the applicant, the planning board reserves the right to a one-year look-back period to consider effectiveness of the traffic mitigation measures. The one-year period shall be measured effective from the date of certificate of occupancy for the permitted use. The measure of effectiveness shall be determined by reviewing police reports for traffic incidents associated with the site, if any, and the applicant's response to these complaints is evaluated by the planning board.
I just want to comment on that. We're not looking, you know, there's a lot of accidents in that intersection already. We're not looking to hold you responsible for other accidents, but if your traffic in and around your services leads to, you know, dangerous or, you know, a situation that we need to improve, we just want a chance to come back and have a discussion and find a way to improve it at that point. Okay.
Number five, there shall be no parking or storage of construction-related vehicles, equipment or vehicles or workers' private vehicles on Bellows Road or any public way at any time. There shall be no loading or offloading of construction materials or equipment on Bellows Road or any public way at any time. The applicant shall provide adequate snow storage in the areas shown on the project plans. Any landscape plantings that are damaged by storage of snow shall be replaced by the applicant.
Jim? I have one question on number three, on the four-week, having the, what's it, the detail. Does the applicant have to verify that after the four weeks that there has been no incidents before they stop the detail, or is it just for, the fourth week, they just stop the detail?
If there are any incidents, the police department will let us know.
Okay. That's it.
Yeah. Does this give us the authority to ask them to extend that detail if it's needed?
I think you should determine that right now.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to think that in the first four weeks, it proves that there's no problems and we can stop the detail, but if there, if the police chief feels that he needs to continue that detail beyond four weeks, I'd like some language in here that shows that you agree to do that.
Yeah, surely. It's not just, it is a public safety issue for us as well. We are responsible for the safety of the attendees. So we will have two traffic volunteers directing the traffic, and if the police chief thinks it is required beyond four weeks, absolutely will be.
Can you add some language, Jim, on that? Do you have a suggestion in a minute?
Give me a second.
Jim's just drafting an additional sentence to put in there that we just want you to hear, so you're not surprised by some new language. All right. That was a good, good catch, Pete.
We just keep on doing a month check back if we have to.
Okay, so let's, let's try this. Should the Westboro Police Department determine that there is need to extend the time duration of the police detail, the applicant shall fund the detail as directed by the police So rather than say it will be extended another four weeks, the police, the police department may say, let's do it two more weeks. They may say, let's do it four more weeks. I don't know what they would say.
That works for me. That's fine.
Gentlemen, you okay with that? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I think we were on to.
Number seven.
Yeah.
Number seven is lighting. The first one, A, item A says outdoor lighting owned and maintained by the applicant shall conform to requirements of the Westboro zoning bylaws and as represented in the plans and include no spotlights. The illumination levels of these outdoor lights shall not exceed the state maximum specified for parking. There shall be no glare or light pollution caused to adjacent properties. New lighting installations in the parking area shall not exceed a maximum of 20 feet in height.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Are there any existing lighting installations that are being retained that are greater than 20 feet?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
Item C, new lighting installations in the parking lot shall not exceed 20 feet in height, including the installation base. All lighting fixtures shall be cut-off design so as to prevent. All lighting fixtures shall be cut-off design so as to prevent light spilling outside of the parking area." Item D, "Lighting mounted on the exterior of the building shall be shielded and focused downward to prevent upward bounce or spill onto adjacent properties." Item E, "Light pole fixtures shall include shielding to direct light away from the abutting properties to the south and southwest of the site." And the reason for those directions is because behind the executive park, you have a residential neighborhood. Item eight, and I think this is the one that the applicant would like to have removed. The way I wrote it was in response to one of the board members' requests. So, the applicant shall provide electrical infrastructure for electrical vehicle charging stations. This shall include at a maximum two Level 3 DC fast charger and one Level 2 AC charger. The infrastructure refers to the electrical connection. It doesn't refer to the actual installation of the charger itself. I know that the applicant has some feelings about this.
I guess the question is, what do we mean by infrastructure? If we put in the conduit, put in the conduit and
Well, our thought was, I think John and I, you know, he's not here to say that, but I think the idea is that you're paving the parking lot, so this would be a good time to put in the conduits, not
We can put the conduit in from the building to all the spaces that potentially the EV station.
That was really the only
Which is fine, we can do that.
You know, we're not asking you to install the actual chargers. This is just the infrastructure.
It's fine.
So that you don't
Insert the words "electrical conduit" in front of "infrastructure." How's that? Is that good?
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, if you're fine with that, that
For five spaces. So we bring the conduit in front of five spaces.
Yeah, I think that's, that's right.
That's correct, Jim?
Five spaces is enough, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I think the only thing is, I don't know the science. The way this is worded is two of them have to be fast chargers and one is just a regular AC charger.
Yeah, conduit is a conduit, it's not gonna matter.
Okay, I'm just not sure if it's a different style of conduit, so I don't want to be caught in a situation where you can't install the fast chargers in five years or something.
I think the conduit is the same, yeah.
I think
It's the wires.
I think if that ends up happening, we'll figure out a solution, so. Hazel, we put you here. We put you here today. I screwed up. Yeah. We are on to the Bellows Road site plan.
I had given Jim a couple of corrections.
We're gonna go back through it and we'll let you know any corrections that were made. We just discussed item eight. When you're ready, we're on page six, and that has to do with the electrical EV charging stations.
Let us know when you're ready, Hazel. I don't want to
Okay. Okay, so we're on page six. Item eight. And we just discussed that, and the applicant has said they will install the electrical conduit infrastructure. So the new language reads, "The applicant shall provide electrical conduit infrastructure," and then the rest remains the same. They won't be installing the actual charging stations themselves. They will install the electrical connection, so in the future, if they can afford to install them, they will.
As long as their electrician is there, I suppose. Would you know
Well, the as-built plans will have to reflect it, so, and they understand that.
That's fine.
Okay, number nine. The storm warning management plan shall be reviewed and approved by the DPW engineering, that should say department. You're a division now. Are you a division or a department? Division? Prior to building permit application approval and operations and maintenance plan shall be reviewed and approved by the DPW engineering division. Prior to certificate of occupancy and shall include but not be limited to show where snow will be stockpiled, a point of contact information for the owner and property manager, a signed illicit discharge compliance statement, and a specific maintenance schedule of onsite utilities with frequency and scope of work identified. Number 10, has to do with fire protection. Item A, all private fire hydrants shall be painted red. B, the applicant shall provide the fire department with a swept path analysis plan for its approval showing turning movements throughout the proposed site to accommodate the town's ladder truck. I know you've already done that. Item C, the applicant shall provide an unobstructed driveway and interior parking lot lane width of no less than 20 feet to accommodate fire apparatus. The next one is item D, it looks like my program didn't keep up with the lettering. The applicant shall provide fire department sprinkler connections within 100 feet of a private fire hydrant. There shall be a fire department connection with a four-inch storage connection with a 30-degree down angle. And those were items requested specifically by the fire department. Over on page seven, item 11. Should the new building onsite become vacant at any time, the owner and applicant shall be responsible for maintaining active water and electric service to the building. This is necessary to maintain public safety for the site and its surrounding neighbors in the event of police or fire department emergencies.
Jim, don't we usually have something about, on these, making sure the building is
Secure?
Yeah.
Okay. How about something like, the applicant shall, let's see, prohibit access through doors and windows?
Secure, secure the building. I would say, secure the building.
Right. I think, yeah, just secure the building, maybe, but I use that usual language that we put in if the building becomes vacant, because obviously, we want to make sure that somebody doesn't break in and do damage to it.
How about, the applicant shall secure, shall secure all entrances to the building to prohibit unlawful entrance?
Fine.
Yeah. Okay. Number 12, "In the event that the applicant secures an agreement with abutting property owners to share parking available on abutting properties, the applicant shall provide safe access for pedestrians to and from the abutting properties, including the provision of paved sidewalks and adequate lighting. The applicant shall be responsible for maintaining this access and associated elements, including snow removal and snow storage provisions." Then I listed all comments that we received. Sure.
You may want to add that the access for pedestrians needs to be ADA accessible. And the building commissioner is the ADA compliance officer, so I don't know if you want to put something in there.
That's a good point.
Can you just repeat that? Or, Jim, can you?
Yeah, let me write something and then
Okay, that sounds fine. Kristin, I found a couple of typos in here. Do you want to, want me to point those out?
Yes.
Okay. In that last section, it should be "share parking." Number 12. The, number 13 says special permit twice in that paragraph. It's the next page, we haven't got to it yet. Under modifications.
I didn't hear that.
I'm just pointing out some typos, Jim, that
Okay, I'll need to have those, because Kristin, I'm gonna be making the changes.
Okay, then why don't we just wait until you're ready and you give us the language on the
ADA
On the ADA compliance.
Okay, so I'm going to insert a sentence after the next-to-last sentence in that paragraph that ends with sidewalks and adequate lighting, and before the words "the applicant shall." The new sentence will read, "All sidewalks shall be ADA compliant and maintained in compliance." Okay.
Wait, wait, I would just add a little bit more of that in compliance, because in compliance with what? So I would say in compliance with state and federal laws or something?
Well, the ADA is the American Disabilities Act.
Right, right. All right, in compliance, okay, all right.
I'll read it again.
I understand, okay.
"All sidewalks shall be ADA compliant and maintained in compliance."
Okay. And be maintained in compliance.
Yes. The, the next section has to do with listing all the letters that we have received in the plan review. And then the last page is the signature page, and those are boiler requirements under modifications and non-performance.
All right, so, Jim, do you want the typos?
Yes, please.
Okay, let me go back to front, just since we're there. 13, it says special permit twice in that paragraph?
Item 13?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you for that.
Under item 12, should be "share parking," not "pairing."
Hold on a second, number 12.
Got it. Can I just comment again on 13? I wish, I don't know. It's sort of a dead-end sentence. I still hung up on that. It sounds ridiculous, but I think it should say "all ADA and maintained in compliance therewith or with the ADA acts" or something, because it's sort of a dangling end to that sentence. So if you just added "therewith."
About, "and shall be maintained in compliance with all ADA requirements?"
That's fine.
Maintained in compliance with all ADA requirements?
That's fine. I just, as I said, you've ended a sentence without, you need some sort of a modifier
That's fine. I appreciate the English lessons.
Let me know when you're ready, Jim.
Sorry, Mark.
No worries.
If the board would like, I'd be happy to go back to, to go over the first seven items for
I had a couple other
For Hazel's. Oh, okay, please, continue.
I'm just trying to see my notes. Maybe it was just one more.
On page four.
You're fine.
The number "use is allowed by this special permit," the header.
Oh, yeah, I think he caught that one already.
I caught that one, you mean, right here at the very beginning?
And you caught the lettering error, the, the lettering mistake in number 10, page, the, where it goes C, C, and then D. The only other one I found was on page two, in the second paragraph. "The site plan application proposes to convert the existing building to a religious place of assembly with a prayer hall." And then the next sentence says, "The site will be redeveloped, retraining." I think it's supposed to be
Yeah, retaining, yeah. Thank you, there's an R there.
I just had one more question, Jim. In your list of letters from, in the materials relevant to the application of the site plan review, on page three, you reference a waiver request. Was that regarding parking, when we determined that no waivers are required?
No, it was the, it was the scale of the plan.
I'm sorry, just, it was a scale of the plan. Do we have to vote on that waiver?
It would probably be right for you to do so, yes. So I will insert that the planning board grants
Typically, we would include a section on any waivers that are granted, and we would vote those individually, so I just want to make sure that that's actually referenced in there and not
Yeah, good idea.
Okay.
It does, I'll get it.
Right, so if there's no further comments or questions from the board?
Jim, did you make those corrections that I had discussed?
I made your corrections. I was gonna go back and let you know what the other ones were.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. There's no H in front of me.
All right. Applicants have any other questions or comments? Okay, it's still a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments? All right. I think the only thing I don't know in the motion is how to make the motion subject to engineering final approval. Jim, do you have any suggested language on how to revise that motion?
I gotta catch up still, I've gotta write your waiver.
No worries. Let's give you, I'll give you a minute. I'll give you a few minutes, how's that? I was gonna wear black tonight, because the brewing season is over, but I
Right. Well, we could go ahead and we close the public hearing, we could go ahead and do that.
Yeah, we could do that, that's fine.
All right, I move that the planning board close the public hearing for the site plan review application at Six Bellows Road. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, that's four to zero.
You could just, Jim, couldn't you just put after the date with "subject to final approval by the engineering department and with the revisions made this evening?"
Yeah, I don't think he's ready to get there.
It was a 40 scale, correct?
He's still working on the
Scale, okay. So you drew your plans to a 40 scale?
A 20 scale.
You drew them to a 20 scale?
Yes, one 40 scale. We require 40 scale.
I think your language is fine for the motion.
So our plan scale is one to 20?
Yes.
Good. All right, Hazel, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, perhaps the motion could read, "I move the planning board approve the site plan review application for Six Bellows Road as written in the site plan approval dated May 2nd, 2023, with the revisions made this evening and subject to final approval from the engineering department."
Put it in the decision. Put it in the decision? Yeah.
Yeah. So, to memorialize what Lisa needs, I'd prefer to add a condition to the approvals stating that the final plans shall be reviewed and approved by the town engineer prior to construction.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then I would leave the subject to revision, language on that.
In the motion.
In the motion, only because to put a letter dated after the fact
Yeah, can't do that.
Which we can't do, so if it's just subject to, I would think that would be sufficient.
In the motion.
Yeah.
Do you understand?
Yes.
Is that okay?
All right, so I don't know if you made the motion or just suggested
No, I was making
She's discussing the motion.
Right.
Okay.
I could now make the motion, if you like, right. "I move the planning board approve the site plan review application for Six Bellows Road as written in the site plan approval dated May 2nd, 2023, with the revisions made this evening and subject to final approval by the engineering department."
I second that motion.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? That is four to zero in favor.
Thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Welcome to town.
Let me ask Kristin, did she make sure she got that? Let, let me ask Kristin, did she make sure she got that motion?
Can you give her the...
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Hazel's got it.
Thank you.
And Hazel's got the language written down, too, that she could give to you.
You okay with that? Yeah, you can, you can go.
I don't know if we'll be able to sign tonight because of the additions...
No, you can. There's no marks on the, on the signature page.
I, the signature page is clear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So why don't we get the signatures down tonight and, um...
Please sign tonight, because I want to file it with the clerk.
They'll have to come back to the office then, because those two, those two special permits were into the last page.
Um, yes, if you, after we couldn't, we, um, it, we, after we adjourn, yeah, please come to my office and we'll fix that page right away.
Yeah, works.
That's fine, yeah. All right, is there any other business? Pat, did you have anything for us? All right. Jim, anything else?
No, um, let me, um, go make that revision right now, before you adjourn. That way, there'll be no question that you execute the document in public. So I would like to do that right now. I'm going to go make that change.
Well, we sign stuff all the time, not, you know, that's been...
Okay, that's fine then.
I mean, we made the vote in public.
Okay, I'll do it. As soon as you adjourn.
I think there's really, we can certainly, I just, I think, in the interest of time, let's adjourn the meeting and we'll all go back there and sign.
Okay.
And I promise we won't discuss anything.
Well, you've already closed the public hearing.
Yeah, we did.
Anything by meaning anything.
Yeah, okay.
Any other business will not be discussed. Promise. The Celtics, all right? Or the Red Sox.
Well, I don't know.
All right. Anyway, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? That's four to zero in favor.
You get to decide who won that, but that was a rate the tie, I think, between John and Hazel.
I'll, I'll give that to, I'll give that to Hazel.
What?
The second there.
The second, oh, you can have it, huh? You know me, I don't care.
Neither do I.
All right. Okay, let me give this to Kristin.
I don't want to get used to these short meetings.